Well, good afternoon to everybody and thank you for joining us for this quarterly hearing with the Treasury and Resources team. This is the Corporate Services scrutiny panel. I guess we'd better start with the usual introductions. I'm Senator Christina Moore and I'm the Chair of the panel.
Deputy Steve Iyer, Vice Chair.
Karen Shenson-Stowe, Member of the Panel.
We have apologies from Deputy Jess Pershaw and the Constable of St Peter who weren't able to join us this afternoon. So Minister, would you like to kick off with your team?
Thank you. I'm Deputy Susie Pennell, Minister for Treasury and Resources.
Go ahead. It does appear that you might be in the room with somebody else who has the sound on. Shall we go to the next member?
Is that better?
That's better, thank you.
I'm Ian Gost, in this instance, the Assistant Minister.
Thank you.
Richard Bell, Treasurer. Richard Summerskill, Controller of Revenue.
Cora O'Brien, Deputy Controller of Revenue.
Apologies, I was on mute. So if anybody else does have to join us from the team, if they could just introduce themselves before speaking, that would be very much appreciated. So if we get started, I think everybody's now quite familiar with this new format. If somebody particularly wishes to speak when they haven't been invited, if they could just indicate their intention to do so in the meeting chat that's available to us all, that would be very helpful. And so we're going to kick off with questions about COVID-19 and the impact that that might have on our public finances. And if we could just ask you, Minister, about borrowing, whether you might just start by updating the panel on the strategy for short-term borrowing and confirm that the loan that you had previously indicated was going to be sought by the Government of Jersey has now been secured, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. It has. The State's Assembly agreed that we could, Treasury, because the government could borrow up to £500 million, which doesn't mean to say that we're going to use it. It's just a borrowing facility. And it's spread across five banks, locally based banks, that's about £100 million per bank. And it's called a revolving credit facility, which means that we can draw down on it for the need at the time. So it's not, and I want to make that clear because I think a lot of the public think we're immediately borrowing £500 million. We're not, it's just a facility. And the, we don't know what the drawdown is going to be as yet because it's only just been put in place. But we felt it was the right way to go. So it's for two years with an additional one year, and then if we needed further than that, an additional one year. And that's how it's drawn out.
Thank you. Are there any fees or arrangement fees or interest rates that will be imposed, or penalties even?
There will be, of course, but we're still, it's relatively new this, as you will know, Chair, because it was only released, easy release last week, I think. We're still sort of talking to the banks about that. So until we've got permission from the banks to disclose any information on interest rates, we can't say it publicly. And I don't know it either until the banks say that we can release that sort of thing.
I see. You have indicated privately some terms, potential terms to us. And so perhaps if you could stipulate those terms privately in written form at some point, obviously the earliest possible, that would be very helpful. One would expect, as any household or large organisation would, that those terms will be agreed in advance of any drawdown being, taking place.
Of course they would. And of course we'll furnish you with the information. It's just that we haven't had the permission from the banks as yet to do that. So I'm not being hidden about it. It's just that we've got to agree with the banks that we can release the information. And as soon as they agree, we will.
Yes, of course. Thank you. Okay. Could you confirm to the panel what steps are being taken now to formulate the long-term borrowing strategy? Because of course, the intention is still there to press on with the hospital project, for example, as well as others. And will this short-term borrowing have any impact on the viability of those?
No, it won't. And on the basis that this short-term borrowing is not based on anything that we have established already. If we were going to do long-term borrowing, as per the previous bond, which was never signed, because of course, it was totally for the hospital on the Gloucester Street site. And that site was eliminated by planning twice. So that bond was never signed. So a long-term bond, as that one was, or the 40-year repayment plan, is probably what we'd be looking at for capital expenditure in the future.
Could I just ask you, though, whether you've had any indication that the short-term facility would impact, say, on the credit rating, which, as I recall, was a really important part of agreeing the terms of the bond when it was looked at previously?
Yes, the S&amp;P credit rating is incredibly important, as you quite rightly say. Whether that changes in the light of this current circumstance will very largely depend on the UK as much as us. And at the moment, it still rests as it was. It hasn't been changed yet. But obviously, a borrowing of long-term facility would be affected by an S&amp;P rating.
Is there any date in the near future where it might be reviewed, the credit rating, that is?
I think it is going to be. The Treasurer would probably know the date, but I think it is relatively soon. But I can't remember the date.
Hello, sir. Our usual cycle is six monthly in July and January. We have obviously, as we are required to do, kept in full contact with S&amp;P S to our current developments on the development side to the short-term borrowing facility.
Thank you, Treasurer. I'm now going to pass over to the Constable of St Martin, who has some questions about the New Deal.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Minister. Do you believe that it was appropriate for the government to announce these measures on Friday afternoon, given that the scrutiny hearing had been booked for the following Monday?
Sorry, did you say to announce the measures?
Yes, on Friday afternoon during the press conference.
Well, we sent out a media, general media release on Friday, but that was based largely on, it was quite public that it had all been agreed, the, when was that, in March, at a State's Assembly, that this would be a facility or a power, and I don't like using the word, but that's what it says in the legislation, for the Treasury Minister to be able to borrow up to, and that being quite important, £500 million. And of course, it's taken a bit of time to find the way through with the banks. And that was when it was all agreed. And so we released it.
And why was the panel not given any forward notice of this announcement?
I'm not quite sure why it would have been needed. It had all been agreed by the Assembly. So it was really just announcing the fact that the banks had agreed to back it.
I think there might be a slight confusion here. Minister, we've moved on to talk about the New Deal that was announced on Friday and moved away from the borrowing.
Right, that's where the confusion.
Minister, with reference to the New Deal, why was the announcement made now when the recovery plan is still several months away?
Right, okay. I'm not quite sure it's an announcement of a New Deal. I think it was an announcement by the Assistant Treasury Minister, who can speak for himself, of course, because he's here, that this is the sort of things that we were looking at. I wouldn't say it was a New Deal. We have obviously, as a government, considered all aspects of how we make an economic recovery. And we have to tread a very, very fine line between lives and livelihoods, I think was a quote I heard somewhere. And it's the livelihoods that we need to concentrate on because we need to work forwards with an economic recovery, because people are going to be suffering hugely, especially parents with children at home, from mental stress, all sorts of reasons why we need to move forward. And it was just, I think, from the, what I read, the Assistant Treasury Minister was saying that these are ways that we've looked at, that we could help with the economic recovery, that he may want to say more.
I'm happy to answer the question directly if the Constable wishes.
Oh, yes, please.
Thank you. And it is, as the Minister said, the Deputy Chief Minister and myself were asked a straightforward question in the media briefing where we were discussing not only the economy, but of course, the other health effects of the lockdown. And I alluded to the work that is being done in government. And I think it was a media outlet that referred to that work as a New Deal. It might, of course, be a fair description of it. But I would hope that those around this virtual meeting will be aware of existing government policy, aware of the principles of fiscal stimulus. And that's, let's remember, the answer was about fiscal stimulus, not about the long or medium term economy. So coming out of the health effects, coming out of lockdown, following the safe exit strategy, what sort of measures government is thinking about. And I, for one, personally support, of course, they've got to go through the process, which is why I alluded to them at a high level. I think it is important for Ministers to speak in public about what their, the direction of their policy is, and the ideas that they're asking officials to consider. So it wasn't an announcement, as perhaps it's been picked up in the media. But I did say that, for my part, a bold package of measures which included those elements would be and should be appropriate and should be brought forward. I was also asked about the creation of a, we might call it a local market bond. And again, I made it very clear what my, what my position was, but that wasn't the position of the government or the ministerial team.
That was, that was actually my next question was about you expressing your personal view that Jersey should look at issuing bonds as a means of funding contraction points. And I just wondered what the Treasury Minister's view of that was, and if any work had been conducted on it.
And of course, a lot of work has been done on it and is continuing to be executed on which way we go forward with bonds. And I think I said that in an earlier question, but whether it was one of the ones that was cut off, I'm not quite sure. But we're looking at all ways of dealing with things. But for the immediate future, the revolving credit facility, which we've put into place now, is what we're using for the time being.
Thank you. And do you believe that the Assistant Minister should continue to give his personal views when representing you at press conferences?
It's very difficult at a press conference to, because you don't know what the questions are going to be, obviously. And I think it, I think the Assistant Treasury Minister made it quite clear that it was his personal view, not that of Treasury. But I think it's difficult to fend off answers. And if the media wish to take it as a representation of Treasury, then that's exactly what they've done, rather than a personal view. So it is a difficult situation to be in, especially at the moment when obviously the media are under pressure, as our government.
Thank you. And during your previous public hearing with this panel, you stated that the tax situation was all being looked at at the moment. What has changed, either internally or externally, to now prompt the announcement of this, in inverted commas, New Deal, including tax cuts?
I think both the Assistant Treasury Minister and the Economic Development Minister both mentioned at a press briefing quite a while ago, that we were looking at all sorts of options on tax. And I think I made it clear in an interview that it was not, not likely to be any change in income tax. But we could look at other ways of releasing some monies, moving caps possibly, or hiring caps on social security and long-term care. We would look at GST. We're looking at everything as a way to move forward on this. We already, as you will know, defer GST contributions. We're looking at whether we should defer those further than just the end of quarter two, whether we should do the same with contributions. It's a big step to take. And we can't leap into the future and say, right, we'll defer it for another quarter, i.e. to the end of October, until we have got at least this month, May, what it's meant by the payroll scheme and the deferment of the contributions, what effect it's had on the economy and the tax take.
Thank you. And how do you expect the stimulation of green lifestyles to boost the economy?
Very good question. I think that we have to, we, green lifestyles have been promoted for quite a long time. And I think that if we're going to, depending, I suppose, on the results of tomorrow's debate, continue with a, or go into a more severe lockdown than we have at the moment. And I'm not going to speak either way on that until tomorrow's debate, because that's for tomorrow. But I think an investment and investigation into more green lifestyles is what we should be doing.
Thank you. And you also stated that the government's intention to introduce technology, which will drive to increase productivity. Could you outline what, exactly what you had in mind, and which sectors this will primarily affect?
Well, as I was not the one to make the statement, again, perhaps the Assistant Treasury Minister might answer. But I suspect it will be largely around digital, which we're investing in quite heavily before this current situation. But he might like to enhance on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I'm happy to do so. As you will be aware, Constable, there is an existing government policy, which is to some extent outsourced to Digital Jersey to encourage businesses right across our community to invest in digital. It's also there to encourage the growth of the digital economic sector in our community. And we would not be the only place in the world thinking and looking to put money towards supporting businesses to increase there and improve their productivity through the use of technology coming out of this health crisis. So I hate to say it, but what I said was, Harold, there's a New Deal. But when you actually drill down, a lot of what I was saying was really common sense and building on existing government policy. And the government is thinking about how it can do that and how it can provide that support. But it's not straightforward. So you can have the high-level policy initiatives, which we've discussed. And then you have to work out the, the actual actions that will be taken underneath. And that's what, that's what officials are busy working on right now. And they will, of course, in due course, hopefully not in the too distant future, be announcements about the individual details of that package of stimulus measures, which will follow, as you will also be aware, the economic guidance that stimulus measures should follow, so temporary, timely and targeted.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question. With reference to the Economic Council, please, could you explain what the Economic Council will do? How will it affect economic decision-making? And what seniority it will have?
Right. Can I refer the Economic Council to the Treasurer, please?
Yes.
It might be more opportune if I just initially or address that, because that was also mentioned at the, at the media briefing on Friday. However, you'll be pleased to know that in this instance, I wasn't the culprit, as it were. It seems as though that's perhaps the insinuation. It was the Deputy Chief Minister. And so the idea is, but the Chief Minister has not yet signed off this process, which he was intending to do this week. Members will be aware of some of the other issues that we are dealing with this week, and therefore it might take slightly longer. And that is a political oversight group. There were, has been members of the community invited to sit on that group, underneath which is a very broad-based group of individuals from across the community. That will be chaired by Senator Farham. And it is very much trying to ensure that every voice across the community is heard and ideas are garnered across the community. But I do think it's important that I make one point. And that is that the fiscal stimulus package is a slightly separate issue, of course. That is something that will need to be delivered and formally announced with more detail, or announced with detail in the next number of weeks. The Economic Council and the Political Oversight Group is looking much more at the medium and longer term strategy and policies that government should be following. So it's very clear from the Fiscal Policy Panel's initial advice in suggesting that the economy would contract by 6% during the health element of this crisis. And we await for further advice from them to understand their assumptions about contraction in the medium and longer term. And so a stimulus package has to deal with that contraction, and therefore it does need to be bold and effective. And I don't think we should shy away from that. And then we're setting in place these structures, or the Chief Ministry is setting in place these structures, of which, of course, the Treasury Ministry is a very important part, because lots of decisions that might be required about money she will be required to make, that will be dealing with the medium and longer term, taking advice from across the community, taking economic advice. And that's where some politicians and islanders have been calling for, they might use the term realignment of the economy, dealing with some of the longstanding issues in our economy. And they need to be addressed and appropriately considered in that stage. And that's what the Economic Council will be helping Ministers to think about.
Thank you. You've just said that the Council will be broad-based, and I believe there'll be 20 members of the Council. I'm not sure if that's correct. So it'd be interesting to see who is on the panel. Will non-governmental states' members be invited to join the Council?
I can't give you the detail this afternoon of exactly the makeup of the Council, because that's a decision for the Chief Minister, unless the Treasury Minister has any more up-to-date information on that. We are due, as Ministers, to meet again later this week. And so that may be considered again. But as I say, that is a decision for the Chief Minister to make. And I know he had intended to make it this week. But as I said, other issues perhaps have gone to the top of his agenda. But that will be made in very short order.
Thank you.
I can't add any more because I don't know. But maybe the meetings directly after this is going to be part of that. But we have another Council of Ministers meeting scheduled for Wednesday. So we might know. And when we do, we'll inform you.
Thank you. And is there a risk that this Council could be used to bypass the legitimacy of the State's Assembly as a policy-forming body in order to stimulate consensus on certain controversial issues? And how will this be avoided?
I would have thought, bearing in mind I'm not part of this Council, that it would be an advisory group, not a decision-making group.
Thank you. And one last question on this New Deal. After this two-year period of stimulus has elapsed, what do you expect the Ireland's economic strategy to resemble?
As I think I mentioned in an earlier answer, that it's very difficult to even go from month to month. Of course, we have to on income forecasting and fiscal strategy. We have to have a long period view. But until we know what, for instance, and it's only for instance, what the payroll uptake has been, and we won't know that until the end of May, which is for April, of course, for payroll in April, we won't know what the uptake of that has been, or whether we'll need to extend it. So although we've got, we are developing, and haven't done yet, but are developing a long-term strategy based on the Income Forecasting Group, which are hoping to publish a forecast in the next couple of weeks, then we will not be able to base a fiscal policy strategy long-term until we know what that is. It's very much, as you, Conata, will understand, as the rest of the Assembly does, as the public does, that it's very much a day-to-day situation at the moment, even though we're doing the work behind the scenes.
Thank you very much. I'll now pass you on to Deputy Iyer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Karen. If we can move on to capital projects, Minister. Which sectors of the economy is the Government of Jersey looking at developing over the coming months and years to expand its economic portfolio and encourage economic growth in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and the looming recession?
Gosh, a long question, Deputy. Thank you. Well, of course, at the moment, everybody is concentrated on the current situation and capital projects, which are in the government plan, of course. And the money in the government plans, which was to investigate the potential for capital projects, has had to be resorted to the current situation. However, from a long-term point of view, of course, we have to look at the hospital. We are doing, there's a hospital Political Oversight Group sitting as we speak, I think. And I think the Chief Minister or the Chair, who's the Economic Development Minister, said that there would be now an answer in July, with a start potentially in 2022, providing planning permission was given. So we're looking at that as being an absolute necessity for the island. Of course, it's not an investment as such from a commercial revenue input. It's an investment for the island of Jersey. Now, if you're looking at other capital projects, possibly a redirection or reinvention or reconstruction, not physically, of four regions, might be an investment for the island of a capital project. So we've got to balance, balance the two. Whether it's to bring money in, or whether it's there for the residents.
Are there any other sectors of the economy that Jersey could be looking at growing in order to improve its flexibility and output? Should a new lockdown-style event occur in the Should a new lockdown style event occur in the years to come?
Well, of course, one sincerely hopes there won't be a new lockdown. But this has been an initiation for everybody globally, not just for Jersey. And we've been very fortunate that we've been able to deal with it so far financially. And we've got to look at schools. There's so many capital projects that we could look at. But of course, everything has been put on hold in order to deal with this current situation.
And have any discussions begun amongst the Council of Ministers regarding targeting fiscal stimulus? And when will they be, when will there be an agreed approach? For example, the possibility of improving cycle routes?
Well, there's been, for as long as I've been in politics, a debate about cycle routes. And yes, the cycle route situation, as Deputy Carolyn Labby has been a great proponent of, needs to be improved, and especially in the current situation, when there are more cyclists than I've ever seen. But there are certain areas, bearing in mind, we are a small community and a small geographical community, as to where you would be able to extend them. So for instance, before you get to the one at Goree, how you would do it from La Roc, you'd have to take private land. Now, how can you do that? So there's the, I don't want to go into the details, it's not necessary. But you would have to work out how you would extend it without interfering with the geographical scenario of taking private land, fields, gardens away.
Moving on to the economy. How have discussions with workers and unions influenced your decision making in relation to the allocation of funds to particular heads of expenditure? For example, in relation to the funding of the Business Disruption Guarantee Scheme?
Well, I think that's the one that we agreed as the States Assembly would allocate 50 million to. I think that's the one you're referring to. And the applications for that so far have not been large at all. But I suspect that as everything continues, for instance, the first phase of the payroll did not see the uptake that we expected. But then that was only the last two weeks of March. And I suspect that May will be an increase in demand for the payroll scheme for payment in April, as we see this carrying on. I think businesses will need more support. So again, it's difficult, as I said before, to go any further than from month to month. And we'll know more by the end of May as to what the take up has been.
But Minister, were there any actual discussions with workers and unions and stakeholders before these decisions were made?
There were. Does that mean, sorry? There were before payroll scheme was rolled out, of course, because we had to have a very quick, it must be said, because we didn't have much time, but consultation across the board as to how we were going to present this. And it's not an immediate copy of the UK one, which the furlough scheme, and people keep referring to us as the furlough scheme. Well, it's quite different because the one in UK supports people out of work. But we're supporting people out of work and in work if they still have their jobs and can manage their jobs. So there's a slight difference in the two schemes. So we did consult, but an ongoing consultation will take place.
During the States Assembly sitting on the 12th of May, the Minister for Social Security stated that she had not yet held meetings over whether there would be cuts to social security. When will discussions with ministers on potential financial restructuring and recovery take place?
They've already taken place on the fact that we have agreed around the Council of Ministers that there's going to be an increasing demand on social security, which will have to be financed. Clearly, with people losing their jobs or being out of work, there's bound to be an increasing demand. So that's what we are in constant discussions with social security. And that will continue.
And have departments been instructed to start cutting costs?
That instruction had more or less happened beforehand. It was part of the target operating model that departments were going to cut costs. But of course, this situation has intervened rather with that when we need a lot more help for health, of course, it goes without saying, and a lot more help for CLS, well, social security, because they're administering the payroll scheme and need a lot more people to do it. So what was initially going to be a cost cutting exercise in all dimensions has been, again, put on hold in order to deal with extra staffing and equipment for the current situation.
Do you think that during this recessionary period, the overall number of FTEs in the public sector needs to be reevaluated?
As I said before, I think that was happening before with the target operating model. That was happening. And I'm very aware of the public concern of the amount of FTEs, consultants, interns in the public sector, very aware of the concern. But clearly, that can't happen whilst we're trying to deal with this COVID situation because a department like Health and CLS, as previously mentioned, need that quantity of advice and medical expertise, certainly in health, in order to deal with the case we are at the moment.
And how is your department working to minimize the increased risk of fraud during COVID-19? In particular, relation to the income substitute package?
The fraud situation, certainly in tax, be it intentional or not intentional. And by not intentional, I mean people who are possibly not able or aware of what they should be declaring, has already been addressed or is being addressed. I mean, tax revenue Jersey are under a lot of pressure at the moment. And across the board on the, I'm not quite sure what you mean by fraud. Do you mind if the payroll situation, co-funding?
Well, obviously, with the up to 138 million being allocated to income substitutes, there is always the possibility of fraud.
There is. And yes, I appreciate your question, there is. And each application is carefully analyzed before a business or employer can access the payroll contribution.
And how sophisticated is the payroll co-funding scheme governance in terms of tracking and tracing? For example, where an employee may be on secondment, how are their primary and current employers treated by the scheme? And ITS and social security as well?
Well, as I say, we, Treasury organize the scheme and CLS operate it. So they're doing a huge amount of tracking and tracing to make sure that every applicant for the scheme, considering it's 80% of employees' wages, they are being very, very careful with taxpayers' money to ensure that each application is tried and tested before it's granted.
The UK's Foreign Secretary stated that the UK economy will not be back to full force until July 4. Can Jersey expect a similar date for the resumption of most of its economic activity?
I think we have to be very careful that we don't base all our dates and times on the UK. As far as the medical science goes and the economic science goes, we are two weeks at least behind the UK. And so we have to be very, we're fortunate in that way. And as much as we have other jurisdictions to look at and to where they, what they've achieved in the time. So I wouldn't give a date of the 4th of July whatsoever. We're still looking at whether the schools resume on the 1st of June after half term and how they do it. And obviously, if the schools resume, albeit in rotation, which I think is what's being proposed at the moment, though not all going back together clearly to allow for social distancing. But then if some children go back to school, that will release the parents to go back to work. So it's a rotating situation. And I don't think that we should jump in with an end date.
How many Revenue Jersey employees are still seconded to different departments? And what impact is that having overall?
Goodness me, may I ask the Comptroller, who's got those figures? Because I don't have them to hand, I'm afraid, Deputy.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I think technically, two are scoring as still being on secondment to other parts of government. Although I am conscious that there are perhaps three or four people in CLS who were due to move to Revenue Jersey and haven't done so yet. I would say overall, that's not having a great impact on our productivity or output. It's obviously having some, but not significant. We've been very lucky that the vast majority of our people can now work at home with a laptop and access the new revenue management system.
Thank you very much, Deputy. And I will pass on to the Chair now. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy.
Thank you. So we can now look briefly to, in the time we have left, to the recovery of the island. Minister, what non-COVID related items of work are you really hoping to push through in the coming months?
Very good question, Chair. Everything is so COVID related that to get the economic recovery in place is the main direction at the moment. So everything else is sort of not paled into insignificance, but it's certainly not of the utmost importance. And of course, the small businesses, the self-employed who have not been able to work for one reason or another, normally close contact, are beginning, like hairdressers, to open again. And they're part of the payroll scheme. So all that is coming back and needs to be supported. So that is the main emphasis of our direction at the moment.
Thank you. As you mentioned earlier, take up of the Business Disruption Loan Scheme and the payroll scheme has been lower than originally anticipated, despite sadly, the number of actively seeking work numbers increasing substantially. So given these indicators, it's possible that the immediate impact on public finances will not be as great as initially anticipated, albeit this may continue for a longer period of time. What consideration are you now giving to future impact on taxation? For example, in order to repay any monies that are invested to cope with the COVID response?
Well, as you quite rightly say, the actively seeking work, the figure has doubled from this time last year, which of course has a huge impact, as I mentioned in an earlier question answer, that a huge impact on social security. And of course, we will have to find the resources to counter that. Also, from a point of view of businesses reopening, they're not going to reopen at maximum capacity immediately. Of course, they've got to build it up again. But we're hoping that with this gradual, very gradual relaxation of restrictions, providing that they adhere to the restrictions, that that will work. And we will know much more in a month's time. As I keep saying, it's really a very, very day to day or month to month situation.
Okay, at the very outset, however, you spoke quite a lot, as did your ministerial colleagues, about the potential increase of taxation in order to pay for this response. So has that thinking now moved away from that and started to look at other revenue raising options?
Well, as I did say in my initial answer, that we would have to do, look at all options. And I would consider an increase in income taxation to be out of the question personally. GST, as you will know, Chair, is a very difficult subject because where do you start, where do you stop, what do you exclude? And we've had that debate so many times. But across the board, it's much fairer on everybody because everybody pays it. So all these aspects we have to look at, whether we increase the caps, as I mentioned, on social security contributions, long term care. There are a myriad of ways that we can do this. But it has to be something that everybody pays for. And this is seen to be perceived to be fair by the public across the board.
Thank you. Talking about fairness, one of the priorities of the government is to reduce income inequality. And of course, this crisis has pushed, as we just said, more people to lose their jobs. And we've seen an increase in the number of people becoming homeless. So it appears that the crisis is causing greater income inequality, particularly amongst those who were struggling to make ends meet prior to COVID-19. So what plans do you have in place to address this in short order and give some hope to those people who find themselves struggling greatly at this time?
Well, in my previous life as Minister for Social Security, and I'm pleased you refer to it as income inequality, we tried very hard to look at every section of that and to reduce it. And we, I wouldn't say won the battle, we certainly had got halfway through the battlefield with doing that, making sure that people could get a job with training, which was provided free to them, if they could. And we were, I think, sort of just on the border of only having long term unemployed people on the list, if you like. I mean, most people who could work were working. This, of course, has set it back considerably. And I understand that, that this is not just, of course, Jersey's problem. And we are looking at it, obviously, with actively seeking work and getting people back into jobs. But if there aren't the jobs for them to go to at the moment, which of course is obvious in the doubling of the numbers of back to work or actively seeking work. When the economy picks up, which it will, then there will be opportunities for people to go. There's also quite a few people over here, I think it's about 500, that's 400 and something, who have been rather stranded here because they have been here under five years. And because of the lockdown inability to get out of the island or get into their own countries are here. So we've introduced the CREST scheme, which pays them a certain amount per week to, it's not enough, but it's not enough to keep them, to pay their rent, of course. But then that would be something completely significant, which I don't think the finances could cover. But there is an amount taken care of for them to help them out and to try and keep them going without becoming homeless. So we are very, very aware of all of this. It's just a matter of trying to balance what we spend taxpayers' money on.
Thank you, Minister. I'm rather mindful of the time. And I am aware that despite this slight loss of connection during this meeting and the temporary delay that we had, you do have another meeting to go to, as I think most of your team do. So we have some remaining questions. However, we will put them to you in written form and look forward to receiving your answers. And I thank you for the answers that we received the other day, following our previous hearing.
Yes, and I apologize again for the delay in you receiving those answers.
Well, that's very kind of you. Thank you. So with that, I will at 3 o'clock call this session to a close. And thank you all very much for your attendance and your answers.
Thank you, Chair.